And Yarra Plenti Regional Library. I'd also, at this juncture, like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land in which we are meeting on, which are the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nations. And I'd like to pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. Thank you very much. And I'd like to now hand you over to Ben McKenzie, who's going to be our games host for tonight. He's a games designer and self-confessed games nerd. And I'll hand over to him now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyn. Hello. Hi, everyone. I think everyone was already here, so you already know who I am. And tonight, basically, this first session, I want to talk a bit about expanding your board game horizons. So I know a lot of you have already played, at least a lot of the traditional family favourite kind of board games. Some of you have branched out and played a few other things as well. But I want to talk about a few things tonight. One is how you can figure out what games you might want to play, how you can get good at learning those games and teaching them to other people, how you can play them online. And then just a few other tips and tricks about games if you're getting into them and you're not already familiar with loads of them. And as Patrick said at the top, if you do have any questions, you can type them into the chat. He's keeping an eye on that and he'll let me know about those questions. I'll also try and reserve a bit of time at the end of this first session for questions as well. Let's, let's get into it. Now, I'll be talking about what board games people are familiar with. And most people have heard of or played the sort of the traditional big five games, things like Monopoly, Cluedo, Scrabble, the other games that we talked about before. But there's a whole world of board games that exist outside of that. And mostly you find those games in specialist hobby shops, but more and more frequently you're starting to find them a bit more easily in places like, you know, your local department store, like a Kmart or a Target or something like that. And I do want to mention at the top of the show, or the top of the session, one of the ones that pretty much everybody's heard of, which sure people have, which is this one, Catan, previously known as The Settlers of Catan, but now it's got a trendy shorter name. It's just called Catan. And if you've, as Patrick, I'm like, you know, if people can say if they've seen this game before in the chat and get an idea of how many people have, I'm just gonna have a look. Are people familiar with Catan? Who's, who's played it? Has anyone played it? Give me a yes in the chat.
Got one no.
One no?
Yeah, someone's.
People have seen it and never really played it? Okay. Now, I'm not going to talk too much about it. The reason I bring it up is because this game is kind of responsible for places like Australia and America and the UK becoming more aware of the broader world of what is often called European board games or Eurogames. And that kind of refers to a style of board game which is very much about strategy and mixes this idea of strategy with a bit of luck. So if you play something like Monopoly, there are a few strategies you can employ. But really in Monopoly, a large part of whether you win or lose is based on how lucky you are with the dice. If you never land on any properties that are worth a lot of money, then you never get the opportunity to buy them. And if no one else lands on the properties that you own, then you never make any money. And so, you know, if you, I'm sure you've all, those of you who've played Monopoly, have all played a game where the dice just never went your way and things did not work out for you. Now, Catan was one of the first board games that really got popular in English-speaking countries that mixed that kind of luck with a bit more strategy. Now, I'm going to show it to you just in case you haven't seen it, because it's pretty typical of the kind of stuff you find in board games. And this is my housemate's copy, so it's got a few notes in here. So most modern board games or European board games will have a rule, a rulebook. And the rulebook is usually quite big, or I've just realised I'm holding that upside down. There we go. So you see that this is called Game Rules and Almanac? That might seem a bit intimidating, but that's just because Catan has been around for a long time. They've streamlined the rules, so this first part tells you the rules fairly quickly. And then this almanac is like an alphabetised list of anything you might have to look up while you're playing the game. So you can see already, this rulebook's a lot longer than the one you might find in something like Monopoly. So you've got a rulebook. I'll come back to rulebooks. You've got a lot of pieces. Now, Catan, like a lot of these board games, has a modular board. So if you're used to things, traditional board games like Monopoly or Cluedo, you know, they have a big board that folds out. Some of these games do have a board like that. But one thing that a lot of these European-style board games have in common is they have a modular board that's made up of bits. And the reason for that is it means you can lay out the game in different ways. And so it won't be exactly the same every time. So Catan's made up of a lot of these little hexagonal squares. And then also, one of the things I like most about this style of board games is they often have really nice pieces. These, Catan has sort of started the tradition of European board games having wooden pieces. And you can see that we've got little, little wooden houses. I'll hold that up to the camera. Hopefully you can see that. So it's a little bit like a monopoly house, but it's made of wood. And then this one's a city. So you'll often get little pieces that, like these ones, are a little bit stylised. They're not made of plastic. They don't have a lot of detail on them, but I like them. I think they've got a really nice tactile feel to them, the wooden ones. And that's one of the other things that I really like about these board games is often they're a lot of fun just to play with the bits. Like it's, it's a really nice tactile sensation. Obviously, you can't get that with everyone if you're playing over the internet, like we will be later tonight, but you know, you get the idea. So with a game like this, it's got usually lots of bits. The bits, though, come in a few categories. So there's the bits that make up the board, which is either one big board that folds out or these little modular pieces like I was just talking about. And Catan also has these bits that go around the outside. That's a bit particular to Catan, but I'll show you some other boards later. You'll often have counters or tokens as well. And Catan has lots of those. So these are often made of cardboard, usually pretty thick cardboard that printed on both sides. And in a lot of games, to save a bit of money when they're making them, they'll come on a sheet and you have to punch them out yourself, which is part of the fun of opening a board game for the first time. So mostly they'll have tokens like that. They'll have the little wooden pieces like this. They might have some pawns. And that's the generic term. So if you've played chess, you know that a pawn is the, the small piece that goes at the front in front of all of the more powerful pieces with special moves. A general piece that's shaped like a pawn is usually called a pawn as well. So this one is a pawn. In this game, in Catan, it's used to represent a robber who comes and steals all your stuff, which is not so great. And most games like this also come with cards, and Catan is no exception. This edition of the game has quite reasonably small cards. Cards do come in a few different standard sizes. You might be used to playing cards which are a little bit bigger than that. Here's one of my decks of playing cards. So you can see these are a bit bigger. This is a pretty standard smaller size. And a lot of games will use smaller cards, particularly when they use lots and lots of cards, because it means it's a bit easier to have a whole stack of cards in your hand. And that's often the case with a game like Catan. But most games like this will have special cards, so they won't have, you know, a standard playing card deck. In Catan, one of the main things you do is collect resources and then spend them to build things. And this is a pretty common theme among a lot of European board games. In Catan, you famously can get sheep, or rather wool, but they're represented by a picture of a sheep, and wheat. And what else have we got in here? Also, you can have bricks. So this is pretty typical. Now, Catan's cards largely represent resources, so they don't have much writing on them. But it's also very common these days, and it's, it's been a good development, that cards that you use for specific rules or that do special things will have the rules of what they do written there right on the card. So you don't have to remember what they do. The cards will actually tell you when you've got them in your hand, which is really good. So those are the kinds of components that you find in a board game. And most European board games will have some combination of these things: pieces, tokens, some sort of board and some cards. And they'll often have all of those things, and they might even have different kinds of cards. And Catan does have different kinds of cards. These ones, oh, these ones are the resource cards, as I was saying before. It's also got, oh yeah, these are good too. So a lot of modern board games will have also some play aids, so some little reminders of how things work. So in this one, in Catan, you've got a little card or a little bit of cardboard that reminds you what the costs are for building the various things in the game. I'm just trying to turn that up the right way so you can read that. So this is a reminder that if you want to build a road, it costs you these resources. And this is, this is ridiculously difficult to do when you're looking at a camera and trying to get your finger in the right place. And it tells you how many victory points you get and what piece represents it on the board. And again, most games these days will come with some sort of play aid card, even if it just tells you what order you do things on your turn. So those are really good. And these are all the bits. Now, every game, of course, has unique parts, and they won't all look like Catan. But I use Catan as an example because it is a very, very popular game. Most people who have tried one European board game will probably have tried The Settlers of Catan. But I actually am not going to be recommending it tonight as necessarily a good beginner game. And one of the reasons for that is that while it does have a reasonable mix of luck and skill, one of the things it also has is a lot of bargaining. So you have to do deals with other players and swap things. And I find a lot of new players are really uncertain what to do in that circumstance, and it can be quite tricky. So as a first board game, it can be good, but I think there are maybe some better ones. And picking a board game that you want to try and get into when you're trying to expand and get into some more sophisticated ones can be quite tricky, but I think there's a few guidelines that can help you come up with something really good. One of those is to pick something that's relatively simple. Because even if you have played a lot of board games, if you're introducing them to other people, you want to start with something simple. And also, I think it's really important to understand that for some people, that's, that's all they really want to play. There are some fantastic board games that are incredibly complicated and have rulebooks way longer than Catan's, like, you know, 50 pages long. And I have enjoyed playing some of those games. But even someone like me who plays like way too many board games doesn't want to play a game like that every time. Some of those games can last a really long time, and they require a lot of brain energy and a lot of concentration. And sometimes I want to play something just a little bit simpler, just to have a good time with some friends. And I think a good beginner board game is more like that, something for people who haven't played that many different board games. It has simpler rules and fewer of them. And so I want to show you one of my favourite games that I used to get people into board games who haven't played these style of games before. And that's this one, Ticket to Ride. Is anyone familiar with Ticket to Ride? I'm pretty sure, and I'm sure Lyn's familiar with it. Yes, excellent. Oh, that's great. Good. Okay, we've got some people familiar with it. I'm going to talk a bit about it. I won't talk about it too much because we've got some people familiar with it. I'll come up with a few other suggestions too. But there's a few things about Ticket to Ride that I think make it a great board game for people who haven't played a lot of them. First of all, as those of you who've played it and love it will know, is there's not that many rules. There's only, there's only a few things you need to know with Ticket to Ride. I'll open it up and show you while I'm talking about it. So again, it's got a rulebook. There's a couple of good things about Ticket to Ride that I think are important considerations. One of them is when you're picking a board game, think about how much space you've got at home. This table, you can't see all this table. I bought this table. I got it, I got it a really good deal. It's quite old, it's secondhand, but it's an expandable table. It's not one of those fancy ones that sort of expands by itself. You have to crank a handle and then put these slats in. But it is quite big, and I'm lucky that the main living space in my apartment has enough room to fit a table like this. But not everyone's got room for a huge table. And a game like Ticket to Ride has actually quite a large board. And you can see this, it's got, it's not a modular board like a Catan board. This is one that folds out. And hopefully you can see, if I stretch it out. It's quite big. And in fact, it's probably only, only just going to fit in the frame of the camera. And so you do need to have a think about when you're buying a game, is this a game that's going to fit on my table? And Catan has, takes up kind of a bit less space than this, but Ticket to Ride takes up quite a bit of space. So I'd say this is probably, this is where you find out I'm not very good at estimating things. But I reckon that's, that's probably a good, what, 75, 80 centimetres across at least, if not a metre. So it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty big board, but you don't need a lot of room other than the board for this. Ticket to Ride also has a fairly small number of components. It has two different types of cards. It has a whole bunch of little plastic trains. And I'll see if I can hold one of these up to you. That everyone gets. This, I love these. There is a deluxe version where the little trains are painted and they have little names and things on them. But everybody's are the same in the basic version. They're just different colours. And there's no dice. And this is something that's common to a lot of European board games. There's, there is luck, but the luck is more in which cards you draw. One of the other good things about Ticket to Ride is you can play with quite a lot of players. So out of the box, this game supports up to five players. And that's quite typical. So more traditional family games, like things like Monopoly and say, like the game of life, sometimes they don't support more than four players. Although I think modern editions of Monopoly, you can probably play with more than four people. But European board games, for whatever reason, or European-style board games, I should say, because often these ones are designed by people in America or even Australia, has made some great games in recent years. But these often support a few more players. The typical number is up to five. And some games will support more. For example, Catan, you can play with up to four players with just the basic game. But you can buy an extra box that's got more pieces in it that lets you play with five or six players. One thing to keep in mind is that some of these games do take a lot longer to play with more players. And that's something else that you want to think about when you're choosing a game that you're going to try, is preferably you want a game that doesn't take too long for when you're getting into them. Some games are amazing over a long period of time. One of my favourite games is based on the Battlestar Galactica TV show. And that's a game where you're trying to secretly find out who is a robotic spy trying to kill all of the humans. And that can take hours to play. Typically, I think, usually about four hours. And that's quite a long game, whereas something like Ticket to Ride is generally quite a bit shorter. But also, on the side of most of these boxes, this one, I don't remember if it's on the side, it might be on the bottom of the box. But most board games these days will have a little section, here we go, that looks like this. And it'll tell you how many players it supports. It'll give you a rough guide on what age group, and also tell you about how long a game should take. Now, that estimate, 30 to 60 minutes, is actually pretty accurate, except for the first time you play the game. And this is pretty typical of most board games. When you play the first game, when you're learning it, it will take longer. So factor that in and just make sure everybody knows about how long it's going to take. But an hour is generally not too long for most people. So that's a good length of time for an early board game that you try out. And Ticket to Ride also, the rules are fairly simple. And one of the reasons that the rules are fairly simple, first of all, you can tell because they're a lot shorter than even the rules for Catan. They're only this long. And it's got a nice diagram in the middle that shows you how to lay out the board, so everybody can access all their pieces. So you can see, you do need a bit of room around the outside of the board, but not that much. So most kitchen tables could probably squeeze in a copy of Ticket to Ride. Now, when you're playing the game, one of the nice things about Ticket to Ride, and one of the reasons I recommend it as a first game, is there's only a limited number of things you can do. It's not super complicated. On your turn, you're only ever doing one of three things. And so that makes the choice a bit easier, and that, that makes it a bit easier for new players to have a go. But I think those are some of the things that make a, a beginning game good for people. One of the other things you've got to think about is the theme of the game. So when you're playing a game, generally, you're pretending that you're somebody else. And it's not in any kind of sophisticated way. You don't have to dress up in a costume. You don't have to put on an accent, although that can be fun for some games. So if you're playing a pirate game, that could be quite a lot of fun. But you don't have to do that, but you are imagining that you are in another role. And that's one of the best things about games, is you get to pretend you're doing something that you'd never do in real life. So for example, in Ticket to Ride, you are running a railway company and you are trying to build railway lines across America. Now, that's in the default version of the game. There are lots of versions of Ticket to Ride. This is something else you'll find about big, successful games, is that they often will make multiple versions of the same game. For example, Ticket to Ride, the original one is set in America, but then there's Ticket to Ride Europe, which is across Europe. Then there's Ticket to Ride in specific countries. There's Ticket to Ride Markland, which is in Germany. There's Ticket to Ride Nordic countries, which goes across Sweden and Finland and all those places up there. So there's lots of versions of it. Each one is slightly different. It has a different map. And usually has one or two extra rules that are specific to that version of the game. But it's largely the same. So if you really like Ticket to Ride, it's a game that you can then buy more of and have different versions of it to play, so you can try something a little bit different. Settlers of Catan, same thing. It's got expansions which add to the game and make it a little bit different. And it's also got alternate versions, which are pretty much the same thing, but a bit different. And sometimes that varies the theme as well. So Ticket to Ride games are always about building train lines. There's a newer, a recent one called Rails and Sails, which also introduces like shipping lines as well. And that uses a map of the whole world, so you can build ships down to Australia from the UK and from America. But it's still largely the same game. But there are variations that change the theme quite a lot. And that's something else to keep in mind, because when you're picking a game, you're never picking a game just for yourself. You're picking a game for your family or for a group of friends. And if you want them to get into it, you've got to pick something that you like. Because if you're going to teach it to them, obviously you've got to be enthusiastic about it. But also you want to try and pick something that you think is going to appeal to them. So if you think none of your friends can particularly get into building trains, maybe that's not such a great theme. But in my experience, most people can at least get a little bit excited about building trains. So let's stick it to ride. I'll show you a smaller game as well, but I think it's a good beginner game. And that is, this is one of my absolute favourites, Love Letter. Has anyone played Love Letter? Probably people have heard of it, played it. Oh, got a lot of nose. Okay. Now, Love Letter I like because it is extremely simple. Now, this is the deluxe version of the game, and I, I gave away actually my standard version, but this, this is pretty much the same. But, but so this comes in quite a fancy box and it's a bit more expensive than the standard version. But the standard version of the game is really cheap. It only costs like $20, I think. And it comes in a nice little box or even a little felt bag, so it's really easy to carry around. This version has much bigger cards than the other one and has some extra cards. But what I'm going to try and do, I'll just show you a couple. But this is really simple. So the basic version of the game only uses something like 16 cards. And this is an idea, this, this actually, the tradition came out of Japan, or at least was made popular in Japan, this idea of the microgame. And a microgame is just a very small game, as you might imagine, that has a small number of parts and a small number of rules. And usually they don't take very long to play. And this is a great way to get into board games if you haven't played a lot of them. So yeah, the basic version of the game only uses 16 cards, but you can play it with up to four people. I think, is it four? Yeah. And this version of the game, one of the reasons that I bought it, is that it can support extra players. So you can play with up to, I think, eight players. And this is something really good for, if you're going to buy a board game, if you're not, if you're not going to have a lot of board games, having one that you can play with a lot of different numbers of players. So this one supports anywhere from two to eight players is great. That means that you can play when there's only two of you, you can play when the whole family's there, you can play when you've got friends around, or if you've got friends over video. At the moment, you can play with lots of people. So it makes it a bit more flexible and you can play with lots of different groups. Now, this game's really easy, because all that happens is you have two cards. And everyone starts with one card, and then you draw another one, and you look at your two cards. And this is exactly what I was talking about before. In Love Letter, the cards have written on them what they do. And this also has a really cute theme. The default version of Love Letter is all about getting your love letter to the princess. And you have to get it to her by giving it to the most high-ranking person in the court. Now, you can get knocked out during a round. And one of the things I love most about this game is that it's got a very cute and lovely theme, very romantic theme. But actually playing the game is pretty cutthroat, because on your turn, you play one card and you do what it says on the card. So for example, the Baron says, choose another player. You secretly compare hands with them. The player with the lower number is out of the round. That means they're out, they're out of the round. They're out of the game for that round. And you play multiple rounds. So it plays very quickly, because all you do on your turn is play one of two cards. So it's not hard to make a choice. You've only got two things you can do, and you just pick one of them. People get knocked out, and often a round of Love Letter will only last like five minutes. But when you win a round, you get one of these tokens of affection. You can see, hopefully, they're shaped like little love hearts. And you play as many rounds as you need until someone wins enough points to win the game. You know, you only use half of these cards if you're playing with four players or fewer. And you only use all of them and a few, a couple more, slightly more complicated rules if you're playing with more than four players. But again, this is a game that has been so successful, particularly once it was translated into English, that there are dozens of different versions of the game with different themes. If your family's really into superheroes, there's a Batman version of Love Letter, where you're not trying to send a love letter, you're trying to catch the Joker. But you do it the same way, by having one card in your hand, drawing another one, and playing one of them, which might knock out another player, or maybe not. There's also, there's a Lord of the Rings-themed one. There's a sending letters to Santa Claus version of Love Letter. There's heaps of different ones. So if you like a game, you can find a version of it that appeals to you and your family or group of friends. And there's, I think there's, there's even a really spooky one, which is called Cthulhu Letter, which is like writing really spooky letters, trying to creep people out. But the basic rules of all these different versions are the same. Lyn's asking if there's a Game of Thrones-themed one. I don't think there is, but that would make a lot of sense. I think that would work really well. So yeah, think about the theme, think about the age limit, think about how long it takes to play, and the complexity. Now, when you look at a game like Love Letter, it doesn't necessarily tell you how complex it is. And you can see again, this, somewhere on this box, the premium one's a bit fancier, so it's a bit harder to find. Usually, most games will have that age group written on it. Oh yeah. So you can see, again, every, every board game company does this slightly differently. But if you look, you can find, it's got that same information on it. I'll see if I can get that close enough to the screen. It's how many players, what age group, and how long it should take. Now, this says for ages 14 and older. I actually have played Love Letter or a version of it with the younger groups, and it hasn't been a problem. This one might say 14 because it does have some more complicated rules in the, the larger number of players version. So, but yeah, definitely worth checking out. It's a good short game for beginners and it's very easy to pick up. But having said that, if you are going to play new games, that means you've got to be able to teach them to other people. And this is actually quite a difficult thing to do well. And I, I like to think I've gotten fairly good at it, but I, I know I can always get more tips. And I actually found a great video recently from one of my favourite board game review shows on YouTube talking about tips for playing games. And I was, luckily enough, they said a lot of the same things I'm going to tell you now. But one of the most important things I'm going to tell you is that if you are going to play a new board game for the first time, have one person who is going to read the rules and read all of the rules before you start playing. And it's best if they do that before people even come around to try and play the game. Now, the Love Letter rules are not that complicated. It does have a few more pages than the standard edition. But that's because it has rules for the standard version for two to four players. That's it. Those, the rules from here on in are for more players, so it's pretty short. So really, this bit just tells you what's in the box, a bit about the story of the game. But you want to read all of these rules before you open it up and set it up for other people. And I also, if you're going to run a board game for someone, it's good manners if you can to try and set it up before they get there, or at least start setting it up, because otherwise they're sitting around waiting for you to set it up. Mind you, you know, that can also be quite useful if you need a break from talking to people, as sometimes we do. I know I certainly do sometimes. So I might just say, okay, everyone, I'm going to set up the board game now, and off I go. So yeah, read through all of the rules. If you need to, try playing it through yourself. And this is a particularly good tip. I find this really helpful when I'm learning a new game and it's complicated. So I'll read the rules. For example, in Love Letter here, it says how to set it up. So if you're playing with five to eight players, it says look at these other rules. But for two to four players, you only play with these cards. So I need to go through and just get just those cards out. For example, I have a prince, I have a count. So I'd go through and set up those cards. Then it goes through here and tells me what else to do with the setup. So I shuffle those cards and face, and form a pile. I'm not going to separate them out because that'll take too long, but you know, shuffle them. Now then, and this is important, there are often rules that you might miss. So for example, one of the things you do in Love Letter is after you've shuffled the cards, you always take the top card without looking at it and put it in the box, and then you close the box up. And the reason you do that is otherwise, people can figure out what cards people have by figuring out what cards they can see. But if there's one missing, well, there's always a bit of information that they don't have. So that's an important rule for the game to work, but it's an easy one to miss if somebody doesn't read. So that's an important rule for the game to work, but it's an easy one to miss if somebody doesn't read through all the rules and make sure they know how it works. Now, um if you're setting it up for yourself, one thing you can do is just pretend you're two or three people and do what it says. So it says you shuffle these, you remove the first one. Um if you're playing a two-player game, you would take a few more cards out, so you play with a few fewer cards. Um if you're playing more than, let's say we're playing with three players, I could pretend this, so each player would start with one card, so I could just deal three cards. And then I could just put them face up, so I could just pretend that I'm playing with three players. And then I can step through the rules and learn how a round works. So in Love Letter, on my turn, I draw one card. And then I decide which one I wanna play. And I could play through a whole round of this and get the feel for how it works by trying to play each different kind of card. Um one thing also that's really good when you're reading the rules is keep an eye out for one of my favourite things that a board game can have. Which is a special rule to figure out who goes first, because it's always a bit boring if you roll dice and someone goes first. Uh and they've never played the game before and they're not really sure what to do. So if there's a special rule, that can be fun. But also if you're teaching a game, it can often be polite to offer to go first yourself, because sometimes going first doesn't give you an advantage. But if you go first, it means that if you have a player who's never played before, they can see two or three people have a turn. So by the time it's their turn, they've seen the game played and they have a really good idea of how it works. So that can be a good thing to do too. When you're introducing a game to people, one of the really important things is when you first sit down to play, before you get into our, any of the actual rules. And how it works, is tell them what the game is and what it's about. Uh now, the Shut Up and Sit Down, which is the name of the uh board game review show that I really like on YouTube, and I do recommend them. Um they are a show that caters to people who are board game enthusiasts, but they do often make videos for people who are just getting into them. So if you have a look at, look them up and find their um videos for beginners, they're really good. Um but they, they kind of really codified this. Um this is what I do when I teach a board game as well, but they say you should always say who you are, um what you're gonna be doing. How you win and why it's gonna be fun. So that's who, what, how and why. So in Love Letter, for example, who are you? Well, you are a suitor trying to get your love letter to the princess. And to do that, you're going to be, so what are we doing in the game? Um we are going to be drawing cards and playing them. And um how do you win? You win by either eliminating the other players. Uh by playing a card that says that player is out, or by lasting until the end of the round, which means you've run out of cards. And having the highest ranking card of all the players who are still in. So now you know pretty much everything you need to know apart from the rules. And it's really important to establish those things straight up. Because if someone can imagine the story of the game, that usually helps them to remember what they're trying to achieve in the game. Um and by telling them basically what you're gonna be doing without getting into the details, they know what they're up for and they've got a good idea. Another thing that um is really good to do is make sure that, you know, you've set up cards in front of people, right? So show them their card, or give them a card, put it in front of them, and then people can be picking it up and looking at it. And if they ask questions, answer them. So don't feel like you have to explain all the rules and then let people ask questions. It's good to let people interact with stuff and ask questions as they go, because one of the other things is everybody learns differently. So some people will learn by listening to you explain the rules. Some people might feel they learn best by reading the rules. So if someone wants to look at the rulebook, make sure you let them. Um some people will find that they learn best by actually playing the game or looking at and playing with the bits of the game. So um those are all good tips for teaching a game. One other thing that I think is really important is to remember, you don't need to explain all the rules when you start. So for example, with Love Letter, I would not go through and explain what every different card does, because they're all different. I would just say, when on your turn, um you will have one card, you draw the top card off the pile. And you'll have two cards, and each card will tell you what it does on the card. You play one of those cards. If it tells you that you have to choose another player, you get to pick who it is. And then you do what the card says. If it says you're knocked out, that means you're out of the round and you can't play any more cards until the next round. Um and that's pretty much all you need to know going into the game. If people have questions about what the cards do. This is a game where you're keeping your cards hidden from everyone else. So you don't necessarily wanna say, but what does a guard do? Because then everyone knows you've got a guard. But most games that have that kind of thing will have a rulebook that goes through those details, and Love Letter is absolutely one of those. So you can see it's got this list, I'll I'll show this a bit closer, much like the um Almanac in the Catan rulebook. It's got a list of different cards and it tells you what they do. Um and it's got a few little notes, so it doesn't just reprint what's on the cards. It explains it in a bit more detail in case there's any questions that might come up, and it goes through all of the cards individually. So that's a little bit about teaching a card game. Um one of the other things you can tell people is uh or or make it clear at the start is 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 how you win, but also um why it's gonna be fun. And the thing, like I said before, that I love about Love Letter is it's got such a lovely romantic theme, but yes, it's a very cutthroat game and people really delight in knocking people out. But because it's so short, you don't really mind if you get knocked out. It's not like a game of Monopoly where if you're the first person to go bankrupt, you know, and it's only four turns in. Uh and then the other two players who are left play on for another half an hour, it's it kind of, you know, that's no good. Um but this, the rounds are so short that you'll be back in in no time, so um it's uh it's good fun. Now, some of these games are easier than others to play online, and of course, that's a big deal at the moment. Um if you're in isolation with uh family or friends that you can play with, then that's great. Um and a game that supports uh the number of players that you have with you is really good. But of course, we often wanna play with people who aren't in our own home, and there are lots of different ways to do that. Um one of them is to play over video, and that can be quite difficult with a game like Love Letter. Where people have to have a card that is dealt to them from a deck, and they need to see what card they have, but you're not allowed to see it. So one of the best things that I recommend for um online play are collaborative or team or. Um well, yeah, collaborative or team games, and those are the two kinds of games that we're gonna play in the next two sessions. So we're all familiar with competitive games, things like Monopoly or Trivial Pursuit, where you play um on your own or in a small team. And you're trying to beat the other teams or other players. But there are a growing number, and these are some of my favourite games, of collaborative games. Um one of my favourite game designers is a guy named Matt Leacock. Um and this is something else too, by the way, if you're trying to find a game that you think you'll like. If you do really like a game, pay attention to the name of the designer of the game. They'll be credited on there. And this is kind of like, you know, when you think about film directors or writers, people often don't pay much attention to those names, but that's how you learn. Um which films you might enjoy when they're coming out. So for example, um Love Letter was designed by this guy, Seiji Kanai. Like I say, he's a Japanese game designer, so you might wanna check out some of his other games. Also worth looking at other games from the same games company, because often they'll try and maintain a level of quality or a style of game. And they'll make it easy for you to find other games that you can enjoy. Um but um one of my favourite game designers is Matt Leacock, and he uh is a specialist in collaborative games. This is the one we're gonna play a little bit later on tonight. It's called Forbidden Island. Uh but he also is most famous for writing a game that has become very topical called Pandemic. Um in which you all work together as a team to try and find the cure for four diseases. Now, obviously, that is a theme that some people may not want to engage with at the moment, um but also it might be a theme that might be quite cathartic. Or make you feel good about it. That's one of my all-time favourite games. And again, it's, it is a game that there are multiple versions of. Uh my favourite version actually at the moment is one of the more recent ones, where you're not trying to cure diseases at all. It's called Pandemic Fall of Rome. And instead you're trying to prevent Rome being uh sacked by barbarians. So you have to make friends with the barbarian tribes and or fight them back away from Rome before the collapse of the empire. Um and that game, just like Pandemic and just like this one, Forbidden Island, are collaborative games. Which means that instead of trying to beat the other players, we're all playing together and trying to beat the game itself. Which has a set of rules which make it difficult for you to succeed. These games usually have a few things in common, one of which is that um things get harder the more players there are. And also, um they, they have uh usually a set of rules that make the game really difficult. So that when you win, it feels very, very satisfying. But because you're all in it together, nobody feels bad about it. Um and when you introduce this game to a group that gets into it, or or any of the um the games that are collaborative. People usually immediately wanna play a game when they lose their first game, and you generally will lose your first game of a collaborative game. So don't feel bad about that. That's generally how it goes. Now, I I won't talk too much about this one, because I know some of you are coming back for the next session, but if you're not. This is a really good one. It's designed for a slightly younger age group than Pandemic. It's for ages ten and up, but again, possibly you might be able to play with younger players. Um and just a word on that, I've I've done a lot of work with kids with game design and teaching board games. And there is kind of a developmental stage that happens for most people somewhere between the age of about. Uh seven and ten years old, so obviously every, everybody's different, some people go through it a bit earlier. Where um before that age, rules are really like a total drag for them. Rules just get in the way of having fun, and it's, it can be quite difficult to play structured games like board games with um kids who are that young. But once they've kind of got the hang of it, then they're fine. Um and that's why you'll often find uh the ages of a board game will often be around eight to ten at the low end. But if you've got kids who are younger than that, um and you know that they enjoy playing structured a- activities, they might well be into it, so give it a go. Uh but Forbidden Island is great. Um I've used Forbidden Island tonight because it's slightly sim- simpler. But there's also uh another game that's very similar called Forbidden Desert, which I think is slightly better, um although this is still very good. And there's a new one which I haven't played yet called Forbidden Skies. Um and in all of them, there are some really cool.
Ten minute, ten minutes there, Ben.
Patrick, um and in all of them, one of the cool aspects of the game is you do get to collect cool objects or build something as you go. And that's how you're measuring your success through the game. So um these are really good. And collaborative games are good for playing online, because you're all on the same team, so you don't have to hide anything from each other. You can set up a camera, uh so what I've got here, and I don't know if you can see it on this, on the, the screen where you can see me. I've got my iPad set up here and connected to the same video chat, so it's pointing down at the table, so you can see what I'm looking at. And if you have a setup like that, that can be pointing at the board, so the information that everyone needs to see is together. You can also, if you're playing a game that uses a lot of cards, take a photo of a card, send it to someone over the chat. Um over whatever online um chat software you're using, um whether that's Zoom or Google Hangouts or or um Microsoft Teams. Right? Um and it doesn't have to be an iPad, like you can also use, um just the most mobile phones can do it. The only thing you've got to be aware of is um some online chat programs will require you to have um a different login. But if you've got a couple of people in your house who've, say, got a Zoom account, then one of you can be logged into the laptop, so people can see the people at the table. And the other one can be logged into their phone that you set up so that people can see the board. So that can be a way you do that. Uh but then everybody can see the cards and it doesn't matter. Now, some team games or social games also are really good for beginners, and they're also quite easy to play um over a video link. Um I'll show you a couple of my favourites. One of the ones, the one we're gonna play um later on tonight is this one, Codenames. Now, I know a few people here have said that they've played Codenames before, so I assume that means we probably won't see you at the session later on. But Codenames is a great game. Um it involves two teams. The teams can be absolutely any size that you want. As long as there's at least two people on each team. Um and it's all about trying to decipher what somebody means um through wordplay. And it's great. It's a really good game. Um it can take quite a short time, or it could take a long time, but yeah, it's, it's very, very good. Um this is something actually else I should mention. In Germany, which is huge, like they love board games in Germany. They have a big game award every year called the Spiel der Jahres, or the Game of the Year. And if a game wins that, you can be pretty sure it's a good game, it's a good family game. And a few of the ones that I've shown you tonight um have won that award, Codenames. Uh Ticket to Ride definitely has won it um quite a long time ago. It's quite an old game now, but it's still very good. Um and a couple of others as well. But um if you see that Spiel der Jahres sign on a box, that's a good sign that it's a good game for a family. Now, um this is, Codenames is kind of, you know, would be classed as a bit of a party game, and that just means that. Rather than it being all about strategy and a board, it's about having a good time and a bit of a laugh with your friends, and Codenames usually does have quite a bit of laughter in it. Uh you also can get a lot of card-based games that are like that. This is my favourite one. It's called the Metagame. Um now, some of you may have heard of a game called Cards Against Humanity. I'm, I'm gonna just say I'm not a big fan of that game. I think it's kind of mean. Um but there are a lot of games that are similar that are not mean, and the Metagame is one of them. Now, this one is probably better for slightly older groups, but basically it's all about taking concepts um from human culture. Which could be anything from a specific film to an invention, to a brand name, anything at all. Uh like I'll pull a card out of here at random, let's see, uh. These are the culture cards, there's lots of them. West Side Story, there we go. And matching those with opinion cards, which could also be anything, for example, more play than work. And there are several different games in the rulebook that work in different ways, but they're all about. Um matching these ideas from culture with these opinions in various different ways, and it's a lot of fun, this game. Um and it leads to a lot of uh funny jokes, people make a lot of fun um comments. Uh it leads to discussions and sometimes even fun arguments, not serious ones in my experience. Um but there's a lot of games like this that are also really quite easy to play over um a, a video link like this. Now, not all the versions of it do, because some of them do rely on everybody having their own card and nobody knowing what they've got. But there are some where you put the cards out in public and then people have to debate over them or or argue about them. Um another one I really like, I think I've got my copy here somewhere, I've got too many games. Oh, here it is. Similar to that, this one, Bring Your Own Book. This is um a fancy edition. There's a different edition that's a bit more available. This one's similar. Um you have cards that are little prompts. Everyone has their own book. And you try and come up with the funniest line from the book that matches the prompt. For example, the name of an expensive luxury car. And then everybody goes and finds a line in a book that they think is the funniest name for an expensive luxury car, and people vote on it. Um so those kinds of party games or social games, as they're often called, are a really good one to play with larger groups. And they often work well over a video link. Um for example, for this one, only one person needs the card that gives you the prompt. Everybody else just gets a book out of their own home. So Bring Your Own Book is a great one for playing over video. Um and I, I think that's, those are all the basic points that I wanted to cover. Um I might just quickly mention a couple of other games, but if anyone's got any questions they wanna ask before we wrap up this first session, now's a good time to type them in. Um and while you're doing that, I'm just gonna show you a couple of other games I think are really good for beginners. Um Sushi Go was designed by an Australian, I think, I've forgotten the name of the designer. Uh probably have to open it up and look in. Uh but that's, um it's from the same publishers, Game Right, as Forbidden Island. Um but yeah, designed by an Australian guy, you can see it's for ages eight and plot up. Uh this is a card game. It's all about collecting um bits. A few people played it, great. There's also a, a larger version of the game called Sushi Go Party, which supports more players. So if you wanna play with a bigger group, um that's a, that's a good one to get. Um bit hard to play over video though, unfortunately. Um if you've only got two people, sometimes you've only got two people to play with, there are some good two-player games. Um Codenames Duet is a two-player version of Codenames, where you're playing collaboratively. So you're not trying to beat each other, you're just trying to give each other hints. So that's a really good one. Oh, one of my favourite games that's very simple is this one, Tsuro. And in this one, um you lay out a bunch of tiles that have little lines on them. And you have a little dragon uh stone that you move along the lines, and the object is just to make your opponents go off the edge of the board. Uh and that's, that's really it. Like, there's not really too many more rules to it than that. There's a little bit of a complicated rule about what you do um when you start to run out of tiles and players have been eliminated. But apart from that, it's very, very simple, but a lot of fun. And it doesn't take very long to play. I think usually, yeah, it says here fifteen to twenty minutes, which sounds about right to me. Um and again, this one is really good also because it can support a large number of players. You can see there it's two to eight players, so that's really useful. Uh the spaghetti game, that's a great name for it, plus I love it. Um oh, two more that I'll mention quickly before we finish up, maybe three. Maybe four. I'm gonna try and sneak in four more games that I think are really good for beginners. Um if you like the film The Princess Bride, I really recommend this game, A Battle of Wits. It recreates the scene where the man in black um is challenged to choose which wine has poison in it. Um and you can play this, it's one, one of the reasons I really love it, is you can play with up to ten players out of this tiny little box. Um it's very simple, but it is a lot of fun. One of the other things about this game that's quite, that's unique is um. One player can win, or all players could win, or some players could lose and some players could win, or everybody could lose. So everybody independently wins or loses the game. It's not one person beating everyone else. Um Flux is a very silly game where uh you play cards that change the rules. This is another one where there's lots and lots of different versions, so you can find a version that you like. This is one of my favourite ones, Pirate Flux. I I mentioned earlier that you don't always have to do accents when playing games, but this one does say um that you can play. Uh you can do an accent and get extra moves in the game. Um Julie, um which game are you talking about? Do you mean um Tsuro, this one? Or do you mean uh Princess Bride? This one would be quite hard to play online, because you do have to have cards hidden from other people. Um one thing I will say is, uh yeah, so Princess Bride hmm tricky to play online, because um it's important that other people don't know which cards you're playing. Um but this one, Tsuro, um also, like uh some of the more popular games. Like Ticket to Ride and Catan and Co- I think Code Names, um there are digital versions of these games that you can buy. For your iPad or tablet or even your computer, and those let you play with people online, and some of those versions are really, really good. Um one of my favourite, oldest favourite games. Um is this one, Carcassonne, it's been around for quite a long time, you can see it when this field year is nearly twenty years ago. Um there is a great online version of this that you can get on iPad. In fact, I think there's a new version and I've got the old one, so I don't know what the new one's like, but if it's anything like the old one, it's really good. Um and in this game, you're building um like a little sort of French medieval landscape. And you're trying to get points by completing cities and roads, it's a, it's a lot of fun, um it needs a bit of space, cause you're laying out a lot of tiles. Like I said, we're, we're just about out of time, there's one last game I'll recommend, this is a really good one that definitely can be played um uh over the internet. Um it's called Spy Fall, this is a game where you're all spies, but one of you is a double agent. And everybody except the double agent knows where you're meeting, and you have to ask each other questions. Um to either try and figure out who the double agent is, or for the double agent to figure out where you're meeting. So I highly recommend this, this is a great um party game and it is really easy to play online. Um as long as you've got someone who is happy to be like a moderator and know information that would spoil the game if they were playing. Um but I think that's, I think we're out of time, has anyone got any quick last questions before I jump out of this session and start setting up for the next one?